We will now go into the Common Council meeting, called Common Council Meeting of July 14th order. If everybody could either stand or respectfully join me in any event within the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Alderman Strochek.
Here.
Alderman Bushy. Alderman Meyer.
He freezes up every time here.
Alderman Henshaw. Alderman Garrel.
Hi.
Alderman Parrish.
Here.
Alderman Schneider.
Here.
Alderman Durbin.
Here.
And Mayor Worth.
There. We have a quorum. Everyone's here, even though Alderman Meyer does look like Kisa Medusa. I am supposed to read, to announce this at the beginning of every meeting. Please identify yourself before speaking unless your name is called on, because people may be listening on the phone and they won't know who's speaking otherwise. Please don't speak over one another. Please silence your phones, including people who are not, you know, part of the council. You can unmute it when it's time to talk or time to vote, but it makes the meeting go much faster when there's, when there's a number of people here. And we have, we now have a process for people registering to speak before meetings. As long as we're doing this virtually, unless we change the rules at some other point, that's how people can, can make comments beforehand. Otherwise, they can put them in writing and provide, and those will be provided to the council or right at the meeting. So the, the next item of business is public officials' reports. I have, excuse me, do I have minutes? Did I skip minutes? Although they're on the consent agenda. I have two quick things I'd like to mention. Mequon has done, and Mequon and Thiensville have done a good job with the virus. But now is not the time to let up, and I know that people are tired of hearing about it, they're tired of dealing with it. But it is interesting since Monday of last week, the total number of reported cases in Mequon-Thiensville has increased by about forty percent. So we had three months of, at one, you know, we're built up to a number, and in the last ten days, it's gone up forty percent more. Now, those numbers are still relatively small. Our hospitals, at least at last report, are not being overly taxed or particularly taxed at all. And Mequon-Thiensville, knock on wood, has not yet had a, had a single death. And we hope that it stays that way. We've been fortunate as a community. But I think it's because our businesses have done a good job in, in having social distancing. People have done a good job wearing masks. People have done generally a good job in public and social distancing. And I hope that we continue to do that. It's important to keep reminding ourselves because the rest of the world is getting much worse. And we don't want that to happen here. The second thing I'd like to, the other hot topic in the world right now, I'd just like to point out that the Public Welfare Committee started a discussion this evening of a community outreach initiative, including potentially a community outreach committee. Because Mequon has become over, at one point, Mequon had little diversity. That has grown, and that has added to the richness of our community with people of different cultural and ethnic and religious backgrounds. And we ought to recognize that. We ought to do what we can to try to make sure that everybody realizes that they're part of one community. And, and I think that the, Alderman Bushy asked that to come to Public Welfare, a couple of other people have been talking about it. Several of us. And, and I think it's a great idea. The time has come to do something more officially to, to try to make sure that our community is one community. That is my report. I know Administrator Jones has a couple of things to say.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just wanted to take a few moments here this evening to talk about the upcoming budget development process that'll be kicking off here shortly within the city. As council members will surely note, members of the Finance and Personnel Committee have been meeting over the last three months to review the revenue and expenditure picture for fiscal year 2020, which we're working through right now. And as has been reported in, in the packets that have been distributed to that committee over the last couple of months, the city is expecting a revenue shortfall of approximately three quarters of a million dollars at the end of this year. Staff has taken the proactive effort of identifying expenditure reductions that we can incorporate midstream here to ensure a positive financial picture as we approach the third and fourth quarters of 2020. But that's also going to pose some challenges as we head into developing the budget for the 2021 fiscal year, which kicks off next January 1st. On the screen before you this evening is just a quick slide that shows some of the key milestones that we will be pursuing as part of the budget. This year, this closely tracks the schedule that was followed last year when, when efforts were directed towards developing the 2020 budget. This week, parameters will be distributed to all department heads who will begin the process of developing their respective budgets over the next month or so. As noted on the screen, those budgets will be due to the Finance Department in mid-August. Preliminary budgets will then be formulated, and the Long-Term Capital Plan and a five-year financial forecast and an updated report on fiscal year 2020 will be delivered to the Common Council on September 11th. Thereafter, we're anticipating two workshops with all of the city departments in an effort to better understand some of the challenges that we'll be facing collectively as an organization. Those budget workshops will be broken up over two evenings in, in mid-September during the weeks of September 14th and September 21st. And like last year, you'll be hearing from each of the city department heads regarding the budgets that are proposed and some of the steps that are being taken to meet the expected revenue challenges that we'll be facing. Thereafter, when those workshops are completed in late September, the final budget, which will be considered by, by the Common Council in their role as the Appropriations Committee, will be distributed on September 25th. We're anticipating a meeting of the Appropriations Committee on an evening in the first week of October. And if necessary, a second meeting of the Appropriations Committee sometime between October 12th and October 19th, schedules permitting. We have a Common Council meeting scheduled on October 13th, which is a Tuesday. This is all driven by the statutory requirement to publicly publish a summary of the budget that is proposed for adoption by the city, and that notice has to be to the local newspaper by October 20th. And thereafter, as has been the practice here in Mequon, the budget will be formally adopted and considered and adopted by members of the Common Council at their meeting in November. So I just wanted to take just a few minutes here tonight to run through the milestones. Should any members of the council have any questions, certainly feel free to reach out to me by phone or by email. And I would be happy to walk through any questions or concerns or suggestions you may have relative to the development process that we'll be pursuing this year. Additionally, on a non-budgetary matters, I wanted to report out that the Mequon Community Pool will be slightly amending their hours starting this weekend. And beginning on Saturday, July 18th, the pool will be open from the hours of 11:00 to 6:30 on the weekends through the rest of the season. And then, beginning on August 1st, those will be the hours of the pool every day of the week. So again, on the weekends, beginning this coming Saturday, the pool will be open from 11:00 to 6:30. And then, from 12:30 until 8:00 during the weekdays, all of the hours will be posted on the city website and included in this week's bulletin. Finally, we have a, our first appliance and electronics recycling event coming up in two weeks, on Saturday, July 25th. This will be taking place at the Public Works Facility on North Industrial Drive. On Saturday, July 25th, between the hours of 9:00 AM and noon, there's a full list of all items that are eligible for recycling appliances, lawn equipment and electronics. It's a drive-through event, so we're hoping to maintain social distancing and keep it safe for anyone that's interested in disposing responsibly of these types of items. Again, more information is available on the city website. That's my report.
Give me a second to unmute, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. We have, I believe, fourteen different items. I don't think it's necessary to read them all, but they all are meeting minutes, and then the acceptance of the fiscal year 2019. All popular, and it certainly is popular, annual financial report. Do we have a motion to approve and accept the items on the consent agenda? A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Good way to start. We have two first readings. The first, first of the first readings is Ordinance 2020-1576. And it's an ordinance amending Chapter 2 to establish the provisions of our legal services in the city. And the Public Welfare Committee addressed it this evening. This is a first reading. The second first reading is Ordinance 2020-1577. And that relates to the timing and frequency of fire inspections and the installation of fire suppression systems. The Public Safety Committee addressed it this evening, and again, this is a first reading. The next item on our agenda is the Committee of the Hall. This is an update regarding the neighborhood land use and infrastructure policy initiatives in the East Grove Neighborhood, which is generally I-43 on the east, Highland Road on the south, Oriole Lane and Uleao Creek on the west, and Pioneer Road on the north. We do have one person who's registered to speak on this issue. Before I get to that, I'm just going to give a couple of preliminary comments. The, we established a policy subcommittee of the Planning Commission almost a year ago. That committee has been meeting on a monthly basis, going over everything from infrastructure requirements to land use to, many of you participated in a, in a neighborhood conversation. There's been small group meetings and what have you that Ms. Tollison will go over. This is not a, well, it's certainly included in there, and certainly the most noteworthy piece of property in this corridor is the northwest corner of Highland and Mequon Road. This exercise has been more to find a more cohesive plan for that entire stretch, and it's part of a bigger conversation and a bigger plan that we're working on to, I'm sorry, I've seen Ms. Alderman Meyer's picture and can't recognize him. I hope he's okay. The, it's a bigger conversation about Port Washington Road, the entire stretch throughout the city. And, and there are other portions of this besides zoning that we're addressing, like public amenities and, and, you know, Park Bench's street posts, all those kinds of things will be addressed as well as, as architectural aesthetic standards. We're trying to do a comprehensive review of that road to make sure that our existing commercial areas stay vibrant and that the rest of the road, one, doesn't, doesn't take away the vibrancy of the three miles that are really our current commercial areas, and two, that, that are, are there, the, the north of Highland Road is developed in some sort of a cohesive, realistic way, the extent it ever is developed. We're not trying to push to have it developed, but what we want to do is make sure that, that submissions in the future are consistent with some sort of overall plan. Because that helps property owners have a better understanding of what their property, what the council might, might entertain for their property. It also helps people who may want to develop have some understanding of what may come. There is, and I'm trying to see if he's still here. There was one person who registered to speak. His name was on the board a little while ago. The person who registered to speak, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Mr. Shanahan?
That's correct. Patrick Shanahan.
Okay. You certainly have the right to make a few minutes of comments before we get into the discussion.
Thank you very much. I'm Patrick Shanahan, Honors Rep for the Porter Acres at the northwest corner of Highland and North Port Washington. We last approached Mequon's Common Council in November of 2019. And we listened intently to the elderperson's feedback and took those recommendations to heart. We've made meaningful changes to our master plan, and we look forward to adapting our playbook to address the Common Council's ongoing feedback. Our prospective healthcare partner, Ascension Medical, continues to remind us of the ongoing sensitive operating needs in their timeline to meet those needs. They do wish and endeavor to provide additional healthcare services to the Mequon community and Mequon residents. They respectfully hope that the neighborhood commercial being considered and contemplated at the corner of North Port Washington and Highland is ultimately aligned with their possible operating needs. We look forward to bringing back a workable solution in the very near future. And again, we thank you for your continued consideration and look forward to collaborative process moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shanahan. Now to you, Ms. Tollison. And we can't hear you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to go over just a couple presentation slides for you, so if I can share my screen.
One second, working on it. All right, you should be able to share now, Kim.
Okay. So the mayor gave a little bit of an introduction. The East Grove land use planning process kind of kicked back up for policy discussion in August of 2019. When the Planning Commission Policy Subcommittee met to discuss work program items, the East Grove land use planning and addressing redevelopment and revitalization of the Port Washington Road corridor was deemed the highest priority among the group. So we've been working pretty hard since August of last year. We've taken a thirty-year, you know, planning outlook or approach to the corridor. You know, understanding that, that build-out isn't going to occur within the next five years. There has been significant assessment of data that's available to the city at this time. And that was really important to spend a couple meetings, just trying to have everybody have a good understanding of the baseline information that was available to us. And I'll talk a little bit more about what that baseline information is. There was, and still is, a heavy commitment to input both from the citizens of Mequon, including the property owners in this particular neighborhood, even further outreach than that. And then professional input with a couple focus groups that we've established. Outcomes are also driven by the desired community character for this particular neighborhood, and I think the mayor in introduction touched on some of that. You know, not wanting to stifle any vitality and redevelopment of the Port Washington corridor was definitely a priority. But so the aesthetics of the Port Washington Road area north of Highland has been a critical component as well. What, what the Policy Subcommittee, I think, has come to realize, and what I think staff continues to indicate to them, is that the city has significant choice in determining what type of land uses and development you'd like to see in this, in this study area. Right now, it's really critical to get Common Council input. I think the committee is interested in confirming their assumptions and concepts at this point because they're preparing to move towards more detailed work. And by that, I mean drafting some code language to address new zoning districts, both for residential and for some limited commercial development that they would like to recommend for the corridor. And what comes along with that, of course, is meeting with affected property owners. And as, as indicated by the representatives that just spoke, you know, we all recognize that we have been hearing from a property owner regarding a specific development proposal. And we'd like to be able to provide direction, not only to that perspective developed project, but to others that will come forward in the future. Just as a reminder, this is the East Grove Study Area. Throughout this entire process, we've asked all of the participants as part of the process to check our study area boundaries and make sure that we're assessing new development or the need for evaluating the land use within this area. So I think it's important to note that the study area boundaries have not changed since 2003. And that's important as well because the two most recent city surveys that have been conducted, where we've asked specific questions about development in East Grove, have been defined as you see it on, on this map. In terms of the Policy Committee work, I'm just going to laundry list these, but if anybody has questions, wants to dive into a little bit more detail about what our assessment is on any of these factors, you know, please stop us. And both Brian Parrish, the mayor, and myself can, can provide a little bit more detail. But the Policy Committee work, again, as I mentioned, really tried to understand some baseline information that was available to us. So they looked at the two recent community surveys that were conducted in 2013 and 19. We had a 2013 East Grove Neighborhood Plan where we went through a similar type of desired land use approach. At that time, we also hired a consultant to do a market analysis of the land use plan at that time. So we revisited the results of that market analysis. We also assessed the impact of the varying land use scenarios that were contemplated in 2013. Everything from total amount of dwelling units to amount of square footage for the variety of commercial uses, traffic impact, potential value, potential payback period related to any extension of public utilities. So the committee dove into that previous assessment as well. As most of you either participated or are fully aware of, we conducted a neighborhood open house in 2019. The reach for that neighborhood open house was well beyond the study area. We looked at MLS data of the Port Washington Road corridor, including our existing commercial corridor area. We looked at Mequon as a whole and compared the two, and then also compared ourselves against other land uses, like office, medical office, industrial retail, against the southeastern Wisconsin region. We then looked at the current supply of land uses and acreage within what we define as the existing commercial corridors. So that's Highland south to county line. We looked at what's been happening in the two TID districts on Port Washington Road, what's left in those TID districts to likely redevelop. And we looked at ultimately phasing in and an ultimate build-out scenario of public utility extension for both sewer and water, and assessed the cost of the extension of those utilities and what that meant in terms of development and economic feasibility. We also looked at raw land acquisition costs because that factors into whether there's a willingness and a desire by developers and business owners and/or homeowners as to whether, you know, the development would ultimately be marketable for this corridor. We looked at track generation. As a reminder, we entered into an intergovernmental agreement with the counties for the Highland Road interchange that indicates the county would not be responsible for costs associated to widening the Port Washington Road portion from Highland to Pioneer for ten years after construction of the Highland Road interchange. So if, if we're, if we're presenting land use scenarios that might suggest an increase in the width of that road, that's a policy discussion we need to have about the cost of doing such. We, of course, looked at the I-43 reconstruction and interchange. You know, that was one of the issues back in 2013 that caused the committee and even the council a pause because we weren't quite sure how we wanted to see the intersection of Highland and Port develop without better understanding the intersection. We all understand that that's the table now. And then lastly, we did a focus group that consisted of residential development leaders, where we asked some very targeted questions about the economic feasibility and the marketability of single-family development in the corridor, both on the west side and the east side of the road. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, those developments. So what was included in your packet and visible for you here and all of our participants tonight is what the committee's observations are in terms of desired land uses as a result of assessing all of the data that we, that we just laundry listed for you. Essentially, the committee is looking at very limited commercial development at both of the gateway intersections. So that's highlighted for you here in red. The southern part on the map is Port and Highland Road. The northern part of the map is Pioneer and Port. So really just focusing on some neighborhood commercial-type services at, at both of those intersections. The blue area is defined as really a mixed commercial zoning district that would be targeted to low-intensity-type businesses. So we're talking about land uses like research and development, small, small business operations for contracting services. And something, land uses that are distinct from the type of commercial uses that are already allowed in the existing Port Washington Road corridor. What you can see on the east side is that blue mixed commercial area is hatched with some yellow striping. And that was really a result from the conversation that we had with the Residential Developer Focus Group. And the suggestion here by the committee is that if the market demands and would have an interest in residential development on the east side of the corridor, we'd like to be able to provide for that flexibility in, in the marketplace. The yellow area is...
If I could jump in for one second. In the blue area, besides, and I don't really like the term "commercial" because that sounds retail, it's not a retail area. But it, it also would, would permit something like Newcastle, so a continuum of care-type facility as opposed to senior apartments, but, and, and some IPS-type uses. And that the idea is that this may be a new zoning district that is a flex-type district. So the IPS uses being like, there's already a couple of churches. If somebody wanted to build a church or a synagogue or some other house of worship, that that may be an appropriate use as well as, you know, Newcastle has been a good use on that side of the road. So the idea is to create some flexibility. So the idea is to create some flexibility, but also then create standards that ensure that one use doesn't harm, you know, either buffers or setbacks or what have you, that if, you know, you don't harm the other uses by some particular use, but all of it would be, other than maybe a Newcastle, something that's relatively low-intensity type uses on that, in that blue area. So we're not talking about three-star buildings. We're not talking about, you know, office buildings. There's plenty of places south of here to do that. We're talking about more the types of things that you can't find and couldn't put easily, but still nice, low-intensity, residentially compatible type developments or buildings. Sorry to interrupt.
No, I think that's a big comment, and I think I would just add that you touched a little bit on some technical standards and some aesthetics. I mean, even dating back to 2013 and consistently throughout this year's process so far, there is a sentiment from the public that, you know, they prefer to maintain a more, I don't know, neighborhood or almost more rural type character, even if commercial development works in this portion of the corridor. And one of the specific questions we asked of the Residential Focus Group was, will allowing commercial, even at a lower intensity type operational level negatively impact the residential development that is likely to occur on the west side of the road? And/or if it's mixed throughout that blue and yellow stripe area on the east side, is are we going to seal our fate, so to speak, if we allow the first land use in that area to be this lower-intensity commercial use? Would we not then see the single family come to fruition? And the response from the Residential Focus Group really was that if it stays at lower intensity in terms of its operational level and you address the aesthetics in terms of having the high-quality design that Mag One has then come to be known for, they didn't see that commercial uses, or the mayor saying that retail, but these types of lower-intensity commercial uses, they did not see that negatively impacting the potential for the single-family residential. The other thing that's important to note about the mayor's comments of including institutional type uses within this mixed commercial district, if you can see on this map, the light blue, most of that are uses that exist and are suited for our IPS zoning. They're either already zoned that way, or they could be accommodated in our existing IPS district. So there, while it may not be clear on this map, there is some consistency in terms of that, the zoning for those light blue areas and the proposed uses that we're suggesting in this mixed commercial use. And then what really remains is the yellow and the orange. And the distinction in the yellow, what you can see is the majority of the west side of the corridor is slated for single-family residential. The strike area is essentially the area behind the hospital and along Oriole Lane. Because the adjacent neighborhood that also fronts on Oriole Lane and Highland is between under an acre to an acre and a half in lot size, it's suggested that that area of the study area would remain at one-acre density. And then the other yellow area is suggested to be at three-quarter acre density. And I guess the last little pocket in there is the orange that's just north of the hospital, and it's suggested there that we would look at low-density senior housing or two-family style residential development. The chart below is really, as I mentioned before, we studied the impact of various land use scenarios dating back to 2013, as well as some land use concepts that we discussed as part of our recommendations. And so this table is just a result of the color coding on this map to show everyone on the council how many acres are dedicated to the various land uses, what's the potential for square footage could be, and understand that that, you know, that is the most liberal interpretation of development for this acreage. And some of that can be further controlled as we go forward to write the text in the code language. But it does give you an indication of the number of units and the number of trips that would be generated as part of this land use, concept land use plan. So we met again last night. We've been meeting every two weeks for the last three meetings to try to get to some consensus on these concept land uses. Last night's policy recommendations included a formal recommendation of this concept land use plan. It included, we've vetted all along, of course, the extension of public sewer and public water versus private systems. The committee recommended last night that due to the cost of extending public sewer, they, their suggestion is to utilize private septic systems for disposal. However, they would recommend expanding public water. Public water extension all the way to Pioneer is estimated at this time to be about 1.3 million. The Residential Development Focus Group thought that while it wasn't necessary, it would be a benefit to the residential development occurring in the area, and then, given our land use plan, including some limited commercial type uses and building code requirements for fire suppression, that the access to public water would ease the development process and likely streamline development and allow for it to move forward at a little quicker pace. As I mentioned before when I was describing the map, allow for a variation between three-quarter acre and one-acre single-family density. We certainly prefer and recommend the use of cluster or conservation subdivision designs, especially given the critical environmental features in the neighborhood. And that resulted in a goal of looking at a plan for integrating a network of open space throughout the entire neighborhood. Again, limiting really kind of neighborhood-scale commercial uses at the two gateway locations. We talked a little bit about the mix of, you know, lower-intensity business use already. And then, as I mentioned, some of those existing institute-type uses or outdoor recreational uses that have told us they, of course, want to remain in the neighborhood, making sure that we're zoning them appropriately if we have to revise their zoning so that we've got some compatibility throughout the corridor and also protect, of course, their operations moving forward. I just want to, again, give a little bit of an overview about the next steps because I think it's important for the council to understand that, you know, at this point, the city would start doing a lot more detailed work. We want to make sure that our resources moving forward are aligned with reactions and input from the council. So the next steps would be to start drafting some zoning additions that will include, you know, certain site design standards, architectural standards. We would need to address policy issues and work with additional government agencies for approval of the public water expansion, looking to develop a network of open space for the neighborhood. Of course, we would then meet with individual property owners that were affected by the rezoning. And then we would be bringing forward those recommendations to Planning Commission for formal action, and then, of course, ultimately to the Common Council. So that includes my overview for right now. And as I mentioned, you know, the mayor, Brian Parish, myself have all kind of been living and breathing this. We understand that, you know, there might be some questions. We're all available to help walk us through this.
Thank you. Alderman Nerven already has his hand up, so I'll call on Alderman Nerven.
Thanks. Can you still hear me?
We can.
Okay, good. Not double muted, good. When we were talking about three-quarter or one-acre density, are we talking actual lot sizes or net densities with conservation subdivisions, or is there a mix of both? I thought we had been doing one-acre densities, even, but allowing smaller lots, you know, with there is a net density of one acre for conservation subdivisions. Were you looking for a shift in direction here? And kind of part two of that question is, with no public sewer, are the soils here even good enough to, for private systems to work properly at that density?
Well, I'll turn to Ms. Lundeen in one second, but the concept was density, but the recommendation, at least so far, is that these would be a minimum of 30,000 square-foot lots, so roughly, which is what both staff and builders and everybody else believes that you need to actually have onsite. You can actually go smaller, but that's a very comfortable size for onsite sewage. We also might have standards that if, for example, there's open space, and we've allowed this at other subdivisions, if there's open space, a mound system or a septic system could have easements to go into the open space because it's essentially underground anyhow. So the idea would be to design it in a way that you maximize the amount of space you have for septic, but, you know, cluster the homes. Because you have to recognize, people aren't going to put million-dollar homes probably. Maybe, maybe on the Oriole Lane property, you may get a higher-end home, but along Port Washington Road, you're going to get nice homes that are in the 400,000 to 600,000. Of course, when we've heard that before, the prices creeped up, which isn't at all bad thing. But you, you, there, we want to make sure that the lot sizes are sufficient for onsite septic while at the same time allowing clustering because it makes developments actually affordable so that you don't have to have, you know, incredibly long roads. And we also allow for more green space and open space to give it a more comfortable feel. Director Lundeen.
Thank you, Mayor. The question with respect to private systems has much more to do with soil conditions than it does for density. As a requirement of our ordinances and as a condition for any land division approval outside of the sewer service area, we do require the submittal of soil borings to show that the lot can have either a septic or a mound system otherwise provided. So unfortunately, without soil study of the area, it would be difficult to say that every single site could support development at that density. But to the mayor's point, there are options in terms of how they could be cited and/or whether the developer should so choose consideration of consolidated or community system that could otherwise be utilized for the property.
And we may find that certain sites or certain pockets can't be developed because there isn't a good onsite system. We're not going to, you know, not going to prove things because the zoning allows them if, in fact, you can't have appropriate onsite sewage systems. Other questions, comments? Alderman Parish?
We're so little at the top here. It's been an honor serving on this committee. We've done a lot of great work. As it relates to the water, you know, part of the way this recommendation came forward was for the water to come down all the way to Pioneer and no sewer. And so that was kind of the vote that was taken last night. So I think that is one concept that we'd like the aldermen to kind of react to. Kim gave a great presentation tonight. She didn't mention one thing we've been talking about, which is a, this Greenway system that would go between Pioneer and Highland. And that was actually really high on the feedback that came in from the focus groups. And so we are, part of our recommendation is to look at a Greenway that essentially, a Greenway could be a variety of things. It could be drainage, it could be a bike path or a walking path, but it's essentially a connection between Pioneer and Highland that keeps pedestrians, bikes, and so on off of Port Washington Road. So that's an idea that we're pursuing. There was, you know, we're looking at doing the Parks Tax, I forgot the name of it, you know, so that this can happen. So one question, I guess, for...
Impact fee.
Thank you, impact fee. One question would be is, are you in favor of this idea and how aggressively to pursue it? Because there's a lot of ways that we could do this. We could take a very long-term approach where we slowly connect all the parcels, or we could really proactively look to connect and provide this Greenway. Third point that if you wouldn't mind reacting to, you saw that the proposed concept plan, when fully built out, based on a number of assumptions, could be 37,000 cars per day. And so there's a debate about, you know, how quickly we get to that, but anything over 20,000 to 25,000 cars per day in the past has led to the road expansion recommendation. So again, that's 25,000 versus 37,000 cars. So does that bother you? Is there, are there, do you want us to try to address the pace of this? Are you not concerned at all? The final point that I would ask you to react to would be the 40 acres at the corner of Highland and Port. I want to emphasize that the entire committee, with perhaps the exception of myself, is in favor of what you are seeing on this concept plan. I also voted in favor of this concept plan. I am not opposed and would probably still be in favor of additional commercial, and this neighborhood commercial or light office concept only along Port Washington Road between Highland up to the hospital. So we're currently on this trajectory to approve all single-family with about an acre and a half or several acres of neighborhood commercial at the corner, which is consistent with what you have at the Highland House and the medical facility across the street. However, with the interchange coming in, you know, do you really see residential along Port Washington Road? The committee concluded yes. I'm a little undecided, and I'd just be great if someone could react to that as well. So those are my four points that I know we'd love to hear some reaction to.
Before we, I would just, the one point you made about traffic, I just want to remind people that this is not something that we expect will be built out in the next five years or even 10 years. In fact, there are fairly significant chunks of land that have been acquired recently by owners for their estate properties and therefore, at least one, and another that's been held for a long time. So we expect that if those develop, it may be a half a generation from now. So the numbers, the trip numbers that Brian talks about, one, those are a worst-case scenario. Two, this plan, you know, this is not something where we're, this is not like the town center where we make the rezoning and then are doing things to prompt the, prompt development of it. In fact, you know, the expectation is this would be a, this is a long-term view. And finally, as Alderman Meyer would probably remember, there were lots of, you know, lots of talk about how Wawa Tosa Road needed to be four lanes. And some of us who were less, had less foresight 15 or 20 years ago, thought that the people who wanted to keep it two lanes were cavemen. They were right. And people who wanted to make it four lanes, it didn't need to be. And yet, the traffic count numbers would indicate that it should have gone to four lanes. So a well-designed road that doesn't have a lot of retail is less likely to need the four lanes, as well as these numbers talk about, that's how many trips might be on this road, but it's not how many trips may use the entire expanse of the road. With an interchange at each end of it, this is guestimating, a long-term guestimating. I just think that it's, you know, a, maybe 20 or 30 years from now, somebody's going to worry about, should we keep it two lanes or should we make it three lanes? should we keep it two lanes or should we make it three lanes or four lanes? Or you could do three lanes with a Twitter, but uh or whatever that's called, not a Twitter, a uh can't remember the term for it. It'll, what, I can't remember the term for it, but McQuan doesn't do those anymore. Um so I I think that the the traffic count and and also that will be adjusted based on whatever the zoning regulations are that we make for the commercial. Um again, you know, that that only is commercial, the business on the east side. Um we haven't set out those standards, so that should bring down some of that traffic count. So I just want to address the traffic count because it's it's a scary thought. But our goal is to try to keep this a two lane road. Um uh Ms. Tolleson and then Alderman Boucher.
Mayor in council, I just wanted to add again that the the chart that you're seeing with the trip generation that assumes those numbers assume that that mixed commercial area would develop solely as commercial. I mean, obviously, even if half of that was developed as residential, you're seeing a substantial reduction. I mean, you're bringing really that down um another, you know, nine thousand um trip. Even if it was a fifty fifty split between commercial and residential within that mixed commercial um zoning classification. So that's getting you more in the, you know, twenty six, twenty eight thousand range. So even just that one change is drastically going to change uh the impact and results. So just again, something to keep in mind that that is these counts are very liberal.
Alderman Boucher.
Uh thank you. Uh four of my questions might be a little bit much for me to remember at this point, but I'll give some of them a go here. First of all, this presentation represents a tremendous amount of more more time and commitment that's going on before it. So I really appreciate that and definitely appreciate that Alderman Parrish um once he came on, the council's still spending the time working on this subcommittee. Um this is impressive work. Uh I just had a couple of thoughts as you're going through this as um as far as like biking. I know that this will definitely ensure that I would be going up Lake Shore Drive on bike rides. But that actually brings up a point is that if traffic does start to get excessive, cars are going to end up doing the same thing. So that's just a concern I I would have in that direction as well. Um I do like that the last point you said about maybe a little light office that supports the the hospital there in the in that area. That's again um my preference or personal take preference here. I did do have a question though and also a comment. And I saw in there um uh something about uh Tiff District. Uh I'd like to learn a little bit more about that. Um but then is it other, I don't know if there's any agreements or potentials for um services of sewer water coming down from Grafton. Is that something that we are allowed able prudent to do?
The 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 Tiff District was the discussion of the Tiff districts that already exist. There is, let me be real clear, there has been no meaningful or suggest discussion or suggestion that there would be any Tiff in this area. Um that isn't the idea. Um the only time Tiff has even been breathed was would it be a way to pay for sewer going up to Pioneer Road? And the conclusion was it doesn't really matter how you pay for the sewer going up to Pioneer Road. We, in order to justify the sewer, you would have to change the entire concept of what was built here to have enough development to justify the thirty million dollars or whatever it would be to run sewer up this road. And nobody on the committee believes that McQuan has uh the appetite for, or frankly, the population that would support that kind of intense development um to do residential. The developers were saying you'd have to put six homes per acre. Um we're probably not going to ever approve six homes per acre in order to make the impact fees for the sewer low enough. And we'd have to increase the type of commercial, excuse me, the type of business uses on the east side of the road to create enough value to make that sewer work. So there was no real discussion of Tiff, and I I just want to be absolutely clear about that so that somebody doesn't pick up something from this conversation and think we have a new Tiff district. That's not the plan. Um as far as coming down from Grafton, I will let the Director Lundin address that, but I know the answer.
Thank you. At this point, um both facilities, water and sewer through Grafton are miles away. Um I think more than four at last count. Grafton currently operates their municipal water system on wells. They would not be able to support expansion to McQuan. There was a study done several years ago um combined between Grafton, Cedarburg, and McQuan if um there was ever a consideration for the village of Grafton to extend their um water source out to Lake Michigan. And if they otherwise considered doing so, there would be the potential to otherwise extend to the south. Unfortunately, they would be pulling the water from Lake Michigan all the way into the village to their water treatment plant and then have to pump it all the way back um to McQuan. And um while that is still a possibility, it is decades away at best. So um while it is a viable alternative that we've looked at to be able to further loop the system, it is not at least currently a good candidate for service. Um while there hasn't um been any meaningful discussion, I um would have to look to see whether we could even connect our sewer system because we are in MMSD system um and the and Grafton is outside of MMSD. I I would need a lot more research on what the allowance would be for us to even consider doing so. But also is miles away, sorry, also is miles away from access at this point.
So the cost would be, you know, instead of thirty million dollars from the north, you'd do thirty, I mean, from the south, you'd spend a ridiculous amount going north. Alderman Girrell. Sounds like psycho. You're still muted, Mark.
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute him myself and I can't unmute him. There he goes.
No wonder I get, no wonder I was getting all that feedback. Uh I think the idea of running the water all the way to Pioneer is a is a great idea. Um and I I looked at this study and I I think that what Alderman Parrish said and the whole team did was was a lot of work and a lot of a lot of thinking and a lot of ways to solve problems and a lot of ways to come up with solutions. And I I I I'm looking at it, I think it's it's quite outstanding. Um I'm not concerned too much about the the septic and uh septic systems. And you may have, you already have the water there. The septic systems we use, and you can use mound systems or you can use holding tanks if it if it doesn't perk, if it if it doesn't work. So uh that's what the hospital did initially when they didn't have their um uh they were using the holding tanks. And I really like the idea of some, if we can work it in some way, of having this uh this Greenway. This Greenway along there, maybe even for uh you know, walking dogs or mountain bikes or, you know, to get off the, you know, that's a, that's a that's a nice jaunt down there and there's a lot of a lot of wildlife and there's a lot of neat stuff. So I mean, having that Greenway off the to the side where where um for bikes and for other things. We're getting a little cramped over on the other side where the bikes coming down Lake Shore heading out toward Port Washington, it's especially in the summertime, there's quite a few bikes that come through there. Maybe some of those people would be mountain bikers that I know that uh or off road bikers too. So I think it's extremely well thought out. Um I'm not too concerned after I heard the comments on the needing the expansion of of the road uh itself wider. Uh but I think so far it's um it's uh covered a lot of bases and I'm 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 pretty impressed.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alderman Urban.
I I think the Greenway makes a lot of sense. It, I don't know whether the right answer is to do it all right away or at least conceptualize roughly where we'd want it to go so that as parcels are developed, it's kind of predetermined where we'd like it to run so they can work around it ahead of time and not have to have continual battles about what connects where and perpetual arguments with the developers about where that's exactly supposed to go. I mean, which is viable, you could either put it up front and then there's no argument or you could set reservations aside. And that might take a little bit more work, but um either way, as long as we're clear about our intent and where roughly we'd like it to go, make sure we actually achieve it over the course of this all being built out over the next couple of decades.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alderman Meyer.
Um thanks for the, thanks for the shout out on Wawa Tosa Road, appreciate that. Um but the uh uh one of the things I'd like to remind everybody is just the fact of that corner that is the northwest corner in Highland and uh Wawa Tosa Road. That's, you know, a primary for residential, it is listed for that. And it kind of, like I've said before, it kind of reminds me of the corner of McQuan and uh Wawa Tosa Road, the northeast corner of that where at one point, now it does have outpost foods there, but at at one point it was going to be a big commercial development behind that. And we kept that residential, it was kind of tough to do it, but we did do it. And it's turned into one of the nicer, the real nice neighborhood over there and some good value to the city. So remember, it might be a little difficult to keep that corner in the residential um vein over there, but I think that's what we should do, even though that there is a uh on and off ramp going to be in that area.
You're talking about Highland?
I'm talking about Highland.
I thought maybe. Okay.
Highland or northwest northwest corner Highland and and Portwood.
Thank you. Other comments? Alderman Hanscher.
Well, just piggybacking on what he just said. I don't think there's, I don't think people are going to want a single family homes in that corner of Highland or Washington Road. I I I don't think that you're going to see a lot of interest in people wanting to develop single family homes there. So I don't, I don't, I see that being a problem because you have you have the interstate coming off there, you have commercial uh the restaurant, and then you have the the uh uh the hospital. I I don't see a lot of people wanting wanting. If there was, you would see more people want, you would have seen development there already where people would be interested in developing that as a single family home. But I don't think there's an interest in that. They don't want to be congested.
I think, and I'd like to, um you know, Ms. Tolleson or Mr. Parrish can correct me, but the residential developer focus group we had certainly suggested that whole area would be good rate real uh residential development. If you look directly south of that development around the Highland House, there's a very, it's it's older, but a very nice subdivision that's there uh that you basically can't see from the road, but it would be a similar type and similar density to what we're talking about here. Um and has been a quite successful subdivision for uh, you know, a few decades. Our our former city administrator lives in that subdivision. Um and and this would be a, you know, effectively a mirror image, although a little bit smaller um than that that subdivision. I I, you know, it's are there people getting feedback? There we go. Um so I I'm uh I I think that you'd find the the reason that hasn't developed to date is because the property owner owned it for a generation, was unwilling to sell it until recently, partly because he died and now his family had it. Um and now it's been purchased. So I I I think you'd find because that's a sewer parcel, that's the one part in this whole thing that we're talking about um that certainly would have sewer because it's already there, uh makes it incredibly attractive for single family development. In fact, what will be coming before the planning commission at the end of this month and probably come to the council next month is the development that Mr. Shanahan's talking about, and that has a portion of single family residential. Um nobody is suggesting that the houses would face McQuan Road, uh excuse me, Port Washington Road. But we have several very fine subdivisions in areas of Port Washington Road that have more traffic than this, where there's homes right up to Port Washington Road, except that there's a, you know, trees and what have you that are that that buffer it from the road. Um I I I think you'd find that if 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 we asked to have this developed, this will be the first parcel that's developed, I'm sure either any, no matter what happens here. And I'm sure that if the council says that it needs to be single family residential, it will end up being single family residential. Alderman Strollcheck.
I grew up just south of there um in the neighborhood that you're referring, that's older, but really nicely maintained. Um and and I and I know several of them there. And and there was, there was pushback from the the larger multifamily units. Um you know, just didn't want to see that. The size and the scope really just didn't kind of blend with the family. Um but I also mirror some of the other Aldermen's concerns that, you know, strictly single family homes there. You know, I ideally it takes and we can end up with them. But I I would, as a council member, be open to, you know, duplex style, you know, condo development in there or, you know, at most maybe four per building uh in that area. And I think that would blend in well with the neighborhood and also allow for some city and some, but setting it back a little bit further from the road to give those residents privacy to, you know, have them be saleable lots and and give the developers some economy of scale to be able to put in a in a larger strip of land uh between the the homes and the road. So just, just a statement moving forward.
Mayor, I'm muted.
Um I'm sure everybody liked what I said. Um I was asking, uh are there any other comments? Kim, is there anything? And I mean, Brian did have a nice list of of items. It kind of sounds like people are not saying we need to put in sewer at the cost of thirty million dollars. Um nobody seems to be opposed to water going in. That is a a policy change. It's not a difficult policy change, but we have to get Public Service Commission approval. But that, uh according to Ms. Lundin, would take a, you know, two, three, four months. Um the, you know, we wouldn't be ready to put water in. That that's just not that complicated. Um and uh, you know, we will have more discussions about the northwest corner of of Port and Highland, uh besides the northwest corner of Port and Highland, which will be the most controversial thing because it's the first thing and there will be an actual application before us. Um comments regarding any of the land use uh uh concepts elsewhere? There were a few good compliments. Does anybody have? Anything else you want to hear? Kim, anything else? Kim, is there anything else you want to hear from us?
So thanks, I think we're good. I think we covered the main topics and I'm assuming then if others aren't speaking out that that means they're in support of the direction that we're headed. So I think we will move forward and start working on some of the details.
We can't hear you.
Mayor, I think you're muted.
Okay, let's get rid of the next steps below.
Director Tolleson, could you unpresent or unshare your screen, please?
Did she leave us?
Nope.
Oh, there she is. I see her hand. What was that called in the the Addams Family thing? Oh, I'm seeing a hand. There we go. Okay, well anyhow, we'll go to resolutions. We have a number of them. Resolution thirty seven forty five, uh it's to reduce the liquor liquor license fees uh for this year based on the okay, uh thank you, Rob. Uh based on the uh coronavirus, the Finance Personnel Committee recommends this unanimously. Is there a motion to approve?
With approval.
Any discussion? All, oh, the stakes of roll call vote, please call the roll.
Alderman Strollcheck. Alderman Bushy.
Hi.
Alderman Meyer.
Hi.
Alderman Hancher.
Hi.
Alderman Gerrell.
Hi.
Alderman Parrish.
Hi.
Alderman Schneider.
Hi.
Alderman Urban.
Hi.
The AIs have it. Resolution thirty-seven forty-six. It's authorized an amendment to the Development and Dedication Agreement for the Gateway to allow the extension of public sidewalks as a city improvement. This was recommended by Finance Personnel this evening. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? If not, please, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? The AIs have it.
Mayor, there's, there's a, Mayor, there's a monetary amount there that should be a roll call.
It is? Okay. Please call the roll.
Alderman Bushy.
Hi.
Alderman Meyer. Alderman Meyer. Alderman Hancher.
Hi.
Alderman Gerrell.
Hi.
Alderman Parrish.
Hi.
Alderman Schneider.
Hi.
Alderman Urban.
Hi.
Alderman Strollcheck.
Hi.
Alderman Meyer, are you back? His face changed. Did you say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Wanted to let you get in on the, the next item is a resolution, Resolution thirty-six forty-one to establish a park and open space naming rights policy. This was recommended by the Park and Open Space Board on May sixth. What did Public Works do this evening?
They voted to approve three to nothing.
Is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion in a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The AIs have it. The next item is Resolution thirty-six ninety-five. This is men's City of McQuan standard specifications for land development regarding acceleration, deceleration, and bypass lanes. It includes a template development agreement. This was recommended by Planning Commission on June twenty-second, recommended by Public Works on February eleventh. Public Works looked at it again tonight, and what did Public Works do?
They voted to approve it three to nothing.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
There's a second. Any questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to thank Director Lundeen because this was a lot of work over a long period of time and it was like herding cats to get people to get it done. The next item is Resolution thirty-seven forty-seven. A resolution approving a four-year agreement with Ewald Automotive Group for the leased own for Chevy Malibu's. What did Public Works do with this this evening?
They took all of your comments and questions into consideration. We got our answers and they voted to approve it three to nothing.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any questions, comments? Any questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Hancher.
Hi.
Alderman Gerrell.
Hi.
Alderman Parrish.
Hi.
Alderman Schneider.
Hi.
Alderman Urban.
Hi.
Alderman Strollcheck.
Hi.
Alderman Bushy.
Hi.
The AIs have it. The next item, Resolution thirty-seven forty-nine. This is a contract for ash tree removal. Public Works, did you approve this also?
Yes, three to nothing.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Is there a second? A motion in a second. Any questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Hancher.
Hi.
Alderman Gerrell.
He.
Alderman Parrish.
Hi.
Alderman Schneider.
Hi.
Alderman Urban.
Hi.
Alderman Strollcheck.
Hi.
Alderman Bushy.
Hi.
Alderman Meyer.
Hi.
Hi.
The next item is Resolution thirty-seven fifty. This is for a change order of the road improvement contract. And what did Public Works do with this this evening?
Vote to approve, three to nothing.
And is that a motion? So approve? Second? A motion in a second. Any questions, comments, discussion? Anybody? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Gerrell.
Hi.
Alderman Parrish.
Hi.
Alderman Schneider.
Hi.
Alderman Urban.
Hi.
Alderman Strollcheck.
Hi.
Alderman Bushy.
Hi.
Alderman Meyer.
Hi.
Alderman Hancher.
Hi.
And the AIs have it. Resolution thirty-seven fifty-one. This is for a drainage capital improvement study near Prairie View Lane and Lake Shore Drive. Public Works, what did you do with it?
They approved it three to nothing. I'd make a motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second. Questions, comments, discussion regarding this? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Parrish.
Hi.
Alderman Schneider.
Hi.
Alderman Urban.
Hi.
Alderman Strollcheck.
Hi.
Alderman Bushy.
Hi.
Alderman Meyer. Alderman Meyer. Alderman Hancher.
Hi.
Alderman Gerrell.
Hi.
Alderman Meyer.
Twice.
Hi.
Oh, there we go. The, the next item is the Resolution thirty-seven fifty-two, which is a review of the residential sanitary sewer laterals. The Sewer Utility District Commission recommended this unanimously earlier this evening. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? A motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Alderman Schneider.
Hi.
Alderman Urban.
Hi.
Alderman Strollcheck.
Hi.
Alderman Bushy.
Hi.
Alderman Meyer.
Hi.
Alderman Hancher.
Hi.
Alderman Gerrell.
Hi.
And Alderman Parrish.
Hi.
The next item, Resolution thirty-seven fifty-three. This is a backup generator at the Parkview Drive with Station B. This was recommended unanimously earlier this evening by the Sewer Utility District. Is there a motion? A motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Alderman Urban.
Hi.
Alderman Strollcheck.
Hi.
Alderman Bushy.
Hi.
Alderman Meyer.
He already said aye.
Hi.
Alderman Hancher.
Hi.
Alderman Gerrell.
Hi.
Alderman Parrish.
Hi.
And Alderman Schneider.
Hi.
The next item is Resolution thirty-seven fifty-four. This is to have three sanitary sewer design study reports done. The Sewer Utility District Commission unanimously recommended this earlier this evening. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Alderman Strollcheck.
Hi.
Alderman Bushy.
Hi.
Alderman Meyer.
Hi.
Alderman Hancher.
Hi.
Alderman Gerrell.
Hi.
Alderman Parrish.
Hi.
Alderman Schneider.
Hi.
Alderman Urban.
Hi.
And that passes. Our final resolution this evening is thirty-seven fifty-five. Thirty-seven fifty-five. Resolution to approve a settlement agreement in connection with the Eastern Sewer Project. The Sewer Utility District Commission recommended this unanimously earlier this evening. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion in a second, please call the roll.
Alderman Bushy.
Hi.
Alderman Meyer.
Hi.
Alderman Hancher.
Hi.
Alderman Gerrell.
Hi.
Alderman Parrish.
Hi.
Alderman Schneider.
Hi.
Alderman Urban.
Hi.
And Alderman Strollcheck.
Hi.
The final item of open session business is an automatic appointment to the Ethics Board. There is a, an appointment, a nomination by Alderman Bushy of Jan Dressler Katz. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 The AIs have it. The last item on our agenda is a potential closed session. The common, this is for the personnel evaluation of the city administrator and city attorney. The common council may convene in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section nineteen eighty-five one C to consider employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation of any public employee of which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. We could then convene back in open session, although we will not this evening. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move to go in a closed session.
Okay, I think I heard a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Alderman Meyer.
Hi.
Alderman Hancher.
Hi.
Alderman Gerrell.
Hi.
Alderman Parrish.
Hi.
Alderman Schneider. Alderman Urban.
Hi.
Alderman Strollcheck.
Hi.
Alderman Bushy.
Hi.
And Mayor Worth.
So we, we're not going to call in somewhere else. We're going to ask all of our friends on the line and, and the public to please sign off.